For our agenda items, we're gonna cut the time down to a minute and a half. Um, for all public speakers for matters not on the agenda. And again, this is intended to be fair to all speakers, uh, as well as to the public who, um, reviews our agenda and signs on to participate in, in the council's meeting and deliberations related to the agenda items. Mr. Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, first of all, to, uh, just read some, uh, words, uh, ahead of the public comment. Uh, public comment will be limited to a total of twenty minutes at the beginning of the meeting and will continue at the conclusion of the meeting if necessary. Comments tonight are limited to a, a minute and a half. Uh, the city council may not discuss or take action on issues not on the meeting agenda, except that members of the city council or staff may briefly respond to statements made or questions posed by persons exercising public testimony right. A member of the public shall only address the body, um, unless, shall only address the body, uh, and shall direct comments to the body as a whole and not to staff, individual members of the body, or the public. No person shall be permitted to interrupt members of the body, uh, staff presentations or members of the public, uh, while at the microphone. Any person making personal impertinent or slanderous remarks about members of the body, staff, or the public, or who shall become boisterous, or threatening, or personally abusive of the society, staff, or members of the public, shall be asked to cease and desist such activity by the mayor or chair, uh, and may be requested or required to leave the meeting in the event the behavior continues to disrupt the meeting proceedings. Uh, and with that, the first speaker is Bert Newton, followed by Jude Batista, followed by Har- Hiram Cormier. One minute and thirty seconds. Go ahead, Mr. Newton. Bert? Bert, we can't hear you? We'll go to the next speaker and we'll bring you back in, Bert. Maybe some things going on with your, uh, audio. Jude Batista, followed by Hiram Cormier Jr. Jude?
Hello, Mayor.
One minute and thirty seconds. Go ahead.
Hello, Mayor and City Council. My name is Jude Batista. I have lived in Pasadena for my whole life, which is about twelve years. I'll start off by saying thank you for the one thousand plus units of affordable housing in the pipeline. I support affordable housing because my family and I like to go out and give away food and talk to people who live outside. I wanna make sure that there are housing units available for them that aren't too expensive when they start trying to look for jobs and find themselves homes. If we rezoned church land, we could provide the much-needed additional sites for affordable housing. As the director of planning, Mr. David Reyes said there are not enough. Most teachers, churches are either not zoned for residential housing or not at a high enough density to make affordable housing development financially viable, so rezoning needs to happen. Also, the rezoning of church's land for affordable housing needs to be by right. If not, a lot of projects won't take place because nonprofit affordable housing developers won't be able to invest the time and money in pre-development due to the risk that it might be denied. If we rezoned church-
Thirty seconds.
If we rezoned church land, th- those churches can build more affordable housing units on their land, giving the people that me and my family meet with every weekend a chance of a home that isn't unreasonably expensive. Thank you for your time and your commitment to housing justice for our com- community.
Uh, next we have Hiram Cormier Jr., followed by Alan Shea, and then we'll try Bert Newton again.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Alright, so, for like the busiest week in a row, I'm calling you to fire the cops who killed Anthony McLean. Uh, you know, we say that all the time, and we've been crying for, for almost eighteen months or so, and nothing has happened at all, and it's ridiculous. It's very disrespectful. Um, if anything is disrespectful, it would be that. So, I'm calling for you to fire those cops, um, as far as that settlement goes. You know, I read one article that you guys put out, or someone wrote about, um, Gordo said we're ready to move on from this issue. But nobody can move on until justice is served. And really, the family will never be able to move on because they can't see their loved ones. And that's a serious, serious matter. Uh, you know, loss is never easy, but especially when somebody's killed in the middle of the street like a dog. And nobody does nothing about it. And really, you know, uh, you say you care, but if you care, one of your constituents that you always talk about, you represent, was shot in the street, and nobody did nothing about it, and you still don't do nothing about it. In fact, you get offended when people call y'all and tell you to make something happen towards justice on that. So, no, y'all really are showing your cards, and, uh, I'm gonna keep pulling them too. So, it's all good. Fire those cops, fire Perez. Cynthia, do your job too. So, thank you.
Your time has expired.
Well, Gordo.
Uh, we'll, uh, try Bert Newton again, see if we can.
Hi, can you hear me?
Now we can. Great. Go ahead.
Great, thank you.
Man.
Yeah, good evening, Mayor and City Council. Thank you for this opportunity to address you and on very important matters. This time that we have to speak on matters not on the agenda is very valuable. It's the time that we, the people, get to have a voice and make arguments for what we believe is right. I know that it is not always easy to sit through, so thank you for listening. And I know that there is a process to get things agendized, and, uh, and the things that we've been speaking about are in that process. But people keep showing up week after week to speak about these things, because if we don't, they might get forgotten. Rezoning church land for affordable housing was on track to be discussed a year ago, but it got delayed. Then it was gonna be taken up by the Planning Commission this month. Now it's gonna be taken up in January. Anthony McLean was shot well over a year ago, and the officer who shot him is still working for the Pasadena PD. I'm not as reflexively anti-police as a lot of my friends are. One of my brothers was a police officer for many years. And I don't always believe that videos tell the whole story, but this one is very clear. It shows a man being shot in the back as he's running away. It could not be more clear. But we are here, here we are a year later. That's why people come back and others come for the first time, week after week, to plead for justice. Racist zoning began over a hundred years ago. It is still with us. And I could say more, but my time is extremely limited this evening, so thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. We'll bring in Alan Shea, followed by Blair Miller, followed by Michael Williams. Alan?
Good afternoon. Yes, can you hear me? Good afternoon, I'm Mayor Gordo and City Council members. As you know, uh, all of us have been calling, asking for some action from the city council, and there has been none as it relates to Anthony McLean. Clearly, you're gonna put more pressure on the community to take action that is opposing your position as you stand, and you have not made any attempt to bring any kind of true justice as it relates to the police department. Clearly, if, if this is how the city is going to handle the, the police department, and we love our police department, but if the police department has done something outside of their, their codes, their performance, they should be held accountable, plain and simple. And it's up to, to you and the city council, uh, members, uh, Mayor Gordo, to make sure this is clean. This will be no different than your own home. If you would allow your kids to go out and do something and they're not disciplined, then I'm sure your house would be in disarray. That is exactly what's happening with the city. It's becoming in disarray as it relates to the leadership here. So, the city has been asking you, the community's been asking you, to resolve this problem. And so, with our new assistant city, uh, city manager, please take heed to what is being presented by the community.
Thank you. Uh, Blair Miller, followed by Michael Williams, followed by Topher Mathers.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council members. Last week, thirty-three-year-old Pasadena resident Yang Yang Liu was killed by a driver at the intersection of Allen Avenue and San Pasquale when she was out for a morning jog. I've been in touch with her husband, and he is beyond devastated. Yang was his soulmate. Pasadena's streets are unsafe for everyone, but especially for the most vulnerable people. Those were not surrounded by three thousand pounds of metal and glass. We are not doing enough to make our streets safer. It's not just money, it is political will. The DOT staff have great ideas for safety features that would make our streets safer for everyone. But these projects are continuously delayed, or reduced, or eliminated due to people whose primary interest is in driving as quickly as possible and who hold outsized political influence in our city.
Thirty seconds.
We need to change how we drive in Pasadena, and we need to start by showing people that driving as fast as possible is not our highest priority. As our community's leaders, you need to step up and put our safety first. And please, I do not ever want to have to talk to another devastated widower.
Mayor, if I might. Thank you, Mayor, and, um, I just wanna remind the public that we did, um, acknowledge the tragic loss of Yang Yang Liu at our meeting last week. Um, uh, my office, this, the incident at, um, Allen and San Squal is in District Seven, and I personally visited the site a number of times, and, um, I know a- as we speak, the Department of Transportation has uh, reevaluated the, um, intersection. We'll continue to look to ways to make that intersection safer. And I've hosted, um, a conversation with, um, a number of nearby neighbors and look forward to doing a, a neighborhood walk of that section of Allen to see, um, if there are other, um, traffic safety improvements that can be made, uh, in that, uh, section of Allen. So, I'd wanted to share that with the public. Thank you, Mayor.
May- Mayor, if you don't mind, um, I, and I, and I'm very grateful for, um, Vice Mayor's, um, comments. I was gonna have some comments at the end, and since he mentioned that, I was gonna bring up some ideas that were brought up through the emails that we've seen, the reduction of speed. I don't know if it's temporary or, or, um, something that we could bring back as a, as an item to discuss. Uh, maybe public safety, or maybe the full city council needs to take on, uh, that idea, re- reduction of steam with re- reduction of speed within our residential neighborhoods. And then, you know, um, part of th- that is the enforcement. And do our traffic officers, are, do we have enough traffic officers? Uh, do the, we need to beef that up. I, I would like to have that as a, a agenda item to come back to us.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk.
Thank you.
Move on to Michael Williams, followed by Topher Mathers. Uh, Anthony Menusos is, has a speaker card in, but it is not yet in the meeting. Sir Williams, go ahead, minute and a half.
I just wanted to say that I, I don't really care if we acknowledge the people that are being killed here in Pasadena, because you're acknowledging it's me. Nothing unless you're willing to do something about these things, to make sure that these things do not keep happening. You keep saying that you're acknowledging these people and you wanna acknowledge, but you don't do anything and, and anything in a quick manner to make sure that these things don't continue to happen. You don't try to stop police violence because you have multiple murderers on your police force, including the people who killed Anthony McLean. You don't do anything about street, uh, uh, community-based violence because you keep pumping money into police programs that have been proven not to work and not put money into things that are community-based programs that have been known to prevent crime and prevent violence in our sh- community. If you're going to say their names, then say their names in a way that is proactive in making sure that their legacies are attached to something that makes a lot of difference to our communities. If you're gonna say their names, make sure that you're saying their names with the intention of making them the last names we have to call. Stop the grandstanding. Do the right thing, like many people have called you up to do over and over and over again. Fire the officers that killed Anthony McLean.
Thank you. Uh, Topher Mathers, followed by Anthony Menusos, who's yet to check in, followed by Jason R.
Hello, Mayor Gordo and City Council members. Last week's tragic death of Yang Yang Liu was preventable. She was killed on her morning jog. She was trying to cross Allen Avenue at San Pasquale near her home. This is the second pedestrian to have been killed on Allen Avenue this year. Eight-year-old Miriam Casella was killed near her home by a driver at Los Llanes Street along her morning walk early this year. Mrs. Liu's death marks the sixth person killed in tra- in a traffic collision while walking in Pasadena thus far this year. And that means six families will be celebrating the holidays without their loved ones. According to PPD records, pedestrians have only been involved in six percent of traffic collisions this year, but have made up seventy-five percent of tra- traffic fatalities. There have been nine hundred and fifteen traffic collisions in Pasadena this year, resulting in fifty-five injured pedestrians, fifty-six injured cyclists, and four hundred and ninety-five injured drivers and passengers. This does not need to be this way. You can do more to make Pasadena streets safer for everyone. But every time you make safety improvements, like the proposed safety improvements for Orange Road Boulevard, or you water down traffic safety projects, you do a disservice to the victims of traffic violence and their families and ensure there'll be future victims. Cities and countries around the world have implemented street safety improvements that reduce the number of injuries and severity of those injuries in the last twenty years. This track record of success recognize that drivers make mistakes and focus on infrastructure with built-in safeguards for our streets by designing them for safety instead of speed. Pasadena streets are dangerous by design. I urge you-
Topher Mathers, your, your time has expired.
-to be safe for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Anthony Menusos, followed by Jason R., followed by Jonah Tanner. R. Six to unmute, Anthony.
Hello there. Can you all hear me?
Yes, we can. Minute and a half. Go ahead.
Okay, wonderful. Well, first of all, I wanna say that I really appreciate the patience of the city council members listening to us when we say the same things over and over again. But we feel like the widow in the parable of Jesus, that we just need to keep speaking out for justice and for the good of our community. And I know you care about the good of the community just as we do. So, I wanna say I really resonate with all the things that have been said tonight, um, particularly, uh, safe streets. Um, I'm concerned, we are concerned about, uh, North Fair Oaks, where there's been a lot of traffic accidents, and we'd like to see uh, some, uh, slowing of traffic in that area with, uh, the complete streets concept. And, uh, I also think we need to take serious action regarding police accountability. It's just disgraceful that the police who shot and killed, uh, Anthony McLean are still, uh, on the beat. That would never happen if they were teachers and they'd done something as egregious as what the police said. And also, I think we need to get agendized, rezoning church land for affordable housing. This is an emergency, affordable housing, and, um, and this is something that really needs to get on the agenda ASAP and approved, so we can, churches can fulfill their mission and be of benefit to our community and address our housing crisis. Thank you very much for your patience, and, uh, I hope that, uh, this, uh-
Thank you.
-will make a difference.
Thank you. Jason, uh, Jason R., followed by Jonah Tanner, followed by, uh, Janee L.
Alright, yeah, so, uh, yesterday while I drove through Pasadena, I saw a sign that said, "The community mourns Anthony McLean." So, while this mayor and the city council may have moved on, the people in the community have not. You have community members calling each and every week to speak on the lack of justice there has been in the name of Anthony McLean. And I'll repeat for the record, there are now seven point five million reasons why the officers who murdered Anthony McLean should be fired immediately. Why is this city so invested in protecting and defending Edmund D. McGwenden, a murderer? What is the benefit of covering up the faults of this police department? How does that benefit the community? You have sanitized the violence of the police department, uh, of the Pasadena Police Department for too long. You allowed Steve Romell to retire without doing what he had the power to do, which was fire these officers. What this council can do is put public pressure on whoever has chosen to fill the city, uh, manager position and take the first step in getting some semblance of justice in Anthony McLean's name. Cynthia Kurtz, as interim city manager, you can start to get those wheels in motion for the termination of these off- officers. Anthony McLean lives on- Anthony McLean lives on through his children, through his family, through his community, and through us. Uh, and finally, I'll say it's great to see the city of Pasadena showing love to Bob Dole, a racist, a homophobe, and a self-professed Trumper. Fuck all y'all.
Uh, Jonah Tanner, followed by Janee L. Naell.
Hi, good evening. Can I be heard?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you so much. Good evening, Mayor Gordo and City Council. I'm speaking tonight out of concern for street safety in Pasadena. As you know, last week, there was a tragic collision at the intersection of Allen and San Pasquale, where a thirty-three-year-old woman was struck and killed by the driver of a fast-moving SUV. This happened in a neighborhood where I used to live, and at an intersection that was part of my daily jog for four years. This type of horrific violence is not an accident, and it's not unique. Instead, these collisions are the predictable result of street design that prioritizes high-speed traffic and puts a low premium on human health and life. This year alone, there have been eight fatalities due to traffic violence, and this is the second death just on Allen. This is part of a larger pattern of dangerous and costly collisions, of which over nine hundred have been reported to Pasadena Police this year. Other cities around the world have adopted Vision Zero principles and demonstrated that high rates of traffic deaths are a choice. For example, the city of Oslo has reduced the rate of traffic deaths to less than one per year. This is a per capita traffic death rate twenty-five times lower than Pasadena, suggesting these fatalities are ninety-five percent preventable. In the coming months and years, I ask that city council and DOT choose street designs that prioritize safety and so protect residents and property value by preventing collisions. Thank you for the time and for all the work you do for our city.
Thank you. Uh, Janee L., followed by Heavenly Hughes, followed by Victor Hodgson. Hi.
Hello. Uh, like my comrades, I am calling to demand you guys fire the officers who have killed Anthony McLean. It is going beyond a year, and there has clearly been evidence, evidence of biases on your part. Anthony McLean deserves to be with his family during this holiday season. But he can't because rogue officers decided to murder him with seconds um, eh, behind his back, which is absurd. I don't know how you can be so freaking scared of people running away from you. Like, if you're so incompetent that, like, you need to shoot be- before even a second question, you probably shouldn't have this fucking job, to be quite honest. But time and time is done. We're calling you guys, and you had continued to do nothing. So, for me, it's showing that you guys also don't deserve to have these jobs as well. It's time for you guys to also pack up and leave too, because it clearly, your, your ability to not do-
Thirty seconds.
-the problem is letting us know that you're incompetent. So, please, pack up your stuff and go, and so we can put people who actually believe and care about their community. Because it's clear, it's clear that you guys do not. So, resign, put your letters in, we'll all take it willingly, every last one of you.
Thank you. Uh, Heavenly Hughes, followed by Victor Hodgson. Hughes?
Hello, can you hear me?
We can. Go ahead. One minute, three seconds. Go ahead.
Hi, Mark. How are you? Good to hear you.
Good, how are you?
Good. Hello, Mayor Victor Gordo. How are you?
You're welcome, I'm glad. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm, I'm glad to see that we have Cynthia Kurtz. Hello, Cynthia. I'm glad you are here. We needed a breath of fresh air. And we appreciate you being here. We look forward to sitting down with you, Cynthia, um, and talking about police accountability and how we can have better community engagement, um, from the city of Pasadena, the Pasadena Police in the community. Um, so we really look forward to having you. So, Cynthia, just so you can know a little bit more about who I am, my name is Heavenly Hughes. I'm one of the co-founders of My Tribe Rise. And first on, our focus is police accountability. A lot of times, people think that we are hate group against the police, but we don't hate the police at all. We believe-
Twenty-five seconds.
We believe that the police should be held accountable. And Cynthia Kurtz, we look forward to understanding if you're in that same space with us of believing that those within the city, city employees, um, particularly, we're focused on the police department being held accountable, um, especially for the murder of Anthony McLean. We ask right now that we take a moment of silence in his name, as we've done for others today.
Miss Hughes, your time has expired. Victor Hodgson? Hodgson? You unmute? Move on to Cat Ross.
Alright, there I go.
Oh, there you go, there you go. You're good. Go ahead. One minute, thirty seconds. Go ahead.
Oh, okay. I wanna also, uh, continue with a moment of silence for those has passed on, uh, such as Anthony McLean, George Floyd, and many others. City Council, we are here again on another Monday. We still haven't seen a lot that has been done in regards to holding, uh, Edwin, uh, D. McGwenden accountable. He needs to be fired. We're here every week. Something has to happen. We have to see change. Um, you know, the Bible speaks about wars and rumors of wars and pestilence. And we can see some of these things are happening now. Some of these things must come to pass. This is a fight against good and evil. Pasadena City Council, what side are you gonna stand on, good or the evil? Because that's where we fight in principalities, not only amongst ourselves. So, do the right thing. Let's do the right thing.
Thirty seconds.
Let's put our hands together, and let's get Edwin D. McGwenden out of there. He should not be policing Pasadena anymore after he killed Anthony McLean. Thank you for my time.
Thank you. We'll bring in Cat Ross as the last speaker in the initial twenty minutes.
Surely, we can agree-
Go ahead.
Surely, we can agree that shooting someone in the back while running away is not an example of the kind of public safety we strive for in Pasadena. Let's hold officers accountable when they do wrong, so that the community can be more trusting of the service that they provide for the rest of the time. Change the officer-involved shooting policy to wrap up administrative reviews of officers within nine months of the incident. Chief Perez says nine months is the longest time it could take to gather all of the evidence and finish their, uh, case. So, let's make that the amount of time that it takes for an administrative review to be conducted. Stop handcuffing mortally wounded suspects. Stop shooting people fleeing in the back. Increase the retroactive recording time of body-worn cameras from thirty seconds to two minutes. Stop pulling over motorists for minor infractions. They keep causing people to die. Let's not have any of the rest of our community be killed accidentally, or unintentionally, or inappropriately by police. Reforms are needed. Let's make those reforms and changes now, so that we can all move on together as a community.
Thank you. That completes the initial twenty minutes, uh, for public comment. Jasmine Richards Abdullah, Adriana Batista, Karina K., Sheila, Carolyn Galoney, Julia R., Simboah Wright, Eddie Portillo, Kyle Johnson, Gary Peters, Jose Munoz, and Julie Martinez are still in the queue. Uh, Julie Martinez will be the last public comment speaker on matters not on the agenda for tonight's meeting.
Thank you, Mr. City Clerk. Uh, that brings us to the-
We'll move on, um, to Karina K., followed by Sheila, followed by Carolyn Galoney. Adriana Batista's still not in the meeting. Go ahead. You have a minute and a half?
Thank you. Uh, my name's Karina. I am a Pasadena resident. You've heard my voice before. I'm also a member of Black Lives Matter Los Angeles, calling in yet again, as other callers have earlier in this call, to uplift the demands to fire the officers who killed Anthony McLean. Um, I want to implore you all as a council to not only see yourselves as administrators and paper pushers and check writers, um, and actually be representatives of your constituents. Not what you think we want, but hear our demands and actually implement solutions to them. The amount of deaths that happens in the, in the city of Pasadena- The amount of deaths that happens in the in the city of Pasadena is extremely telling of your laziness. Um, and is extremely just telling of the fact that you don't want to deal with systemic issues. So people dying because of of traffic issues, don't send more police to to enforce that, please. Deal with the systemic issue of failed failed streets and systems. Deal with the systemic issue of your police department who have rabid officers, rabid officers who chase down black men through cars, weaving through cars. Chase them down and shoot them in the back. Deal with that before you're paper pushing. Fire the officers. Cynthia Kurtz, we would like you to hold the police department accountable and not wait endlessly for them to do an investigation that they're not doing. Thank you.
We'll bring in uh, Sheila, followed by Carolyn Galoney, and then we'll circle back to Jasmine Richards Abdullah. Longer than that? So uh, Sheila, followed by Carolyn Galoney, followed by Julia R. Julia's not there. Simboah Wright. Uh, Eddie Portillo. Kyle Johnson. Alright, Gary Peters. Jose Munoz. Alright, we'll bring in Jose Munoz. Star six to unmute, Mr. Munoz.
It's Jose Munoz?
Yes, go ahead.
Uh, hello, uh, City Council Mayor, uh, the City Manager Cynthia Kurtz. I I'm calling in regards to uh, I'm I work for the city. I'm a, I work for the um, trash department. And uh, I'm calling in regards uh, for negotiation for our contract. Um, it just seems like it's uh, not going anywhere. And what you guys are offering is 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 really embarrassing. Um, as you guys know, the uh, pandemic hit us all. Um, after after the um, uh, COVID nineteen started, uh, we've been non-stop work. We've, there's been so much work. As you know, people are staying home. Um, there's more trash, there's more recycling, there's more yard waste. And unfortunately, as we try to negotiate, it just doesn't seem like we're getting any type of respect.
Thirty seconds.
What you are offering us is really a slap in the face. And as a city, I'm hoping that you guys will look at the numbers and to treat us fairly at the end of the day, because uh, a half a percent raise is really a slap in the face. And I'm hoping that you guys really think about this. And Cynthia, I'm hoping that as you're the new manager, that you really, really think about what a half a percent would do for you or the rest of the people. I I would really appreciate you guys really putting some thought into it and give us the respect that we owe.
Munoz, your time has expired. Thank you. Alright, Jasmine Richards Abdullah. Jasmine, are you there?
Yeah, I'm here. Um.
Minute thirty, go ahead.
Okay. Um, Cynthia Kurtz, since you're the stand-in uh, City Manager, we're the ball is in your court now. We're asking you to fire Edwin Do McGwenden, who was an officer that killed Anthony McLean. Also fire Matthew Griffin, who who killed um, Kendrick McDay. Um, I've had several run-ins with Matthew Griffin and nothing has changed about him. He's still the arrogant murderer that he's always been. Um, also, um, we've been asking the community oversight, police oversight board. Um, we we want you guys to change their scope. They don't, they can't do anything. And we need you guys to like, readjust their scope. I I have some demands for you guys right now, though. Um, the first demand that we're asking you guys to do, eh, this is a Black Lives Matter Pasadena. We're asking you guys to put these officers on a yearly annual psychiatric evaluation. Why? Because we know that these officers are crazy out here, and they need some help, shit. And we also would like you guys to um, do an annual drug test. Um, as far as the last uh, community oversight, police overs. We found out that some of those officers was high when they killed Reginald J.R. Thomas. Um, they were off substances, and by substances, we're talking about uh, steroids, talking about coke, talking about those type of things. So you guys need to test these these officers. Um, put it inside the policy. We need a change of policy, and that's what we're asking for right now. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll bring in Adriana Batista, followed by Gary Peters, followed by Julie Martinez. Batista. Star six to unmute. There you go. Minute and a half.
Hello, I would also like to echo demands um, for City Manager Cynthia Kurtz to fire Officer Edwin Do McGwenden, along with Ronald Serrano and other officers involved, um, including Officer Duncan, who recovered a gun from the scene, which um, PPD has yet to release um, any statement or um, evidence, surveillance camera footage, body cam footage of the gun being um, retrieved on the scene. Um, regarding the Oversight Commission, um, Mu- uh, Deputy Chief Mu- uh, Moody um, shared with the committee that the criminal inv- that PPD is waiting for the criminal investigation to be fully completed in order for the administrative investigation to um, be commenced. This is a blatant um, blatantly terrible policy to uphold. And in fact, OIR's recommendations and past um, murders of black men in Pasadena have recommended for PPP to do the investigations concurrently at the same time. Um, so this should be put into policy immediately. Um, more time equals more room for error, more room for. Okay, so for the administration investigation to be done immediately.
Thank you. Gary Peters, followed by uh, Julie Martinez. Gary Peters fell off. Julie Martinez.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can. Minute thirty, go ahead.
Thank you. Police in California have a serious problem with deadly force. In California alone, we had more shootings than any other state in the nation. The city of Pasadena has a serious problem with the profiling of the black community by racial profiling them. It is time for justice for Anthony McLean and for his family. Those officers, any officer involved, needs to be fired immediately. It's unacceptable. We expect so much more from Pasadena leadership. This is the town that produced Jackie Robinson, who who broke the color barrier. What is wrong? The disappointment in our City Council and the Chief of Police and the City Manager for not addressing the systemic racism that other police departments and other government agencies throughout the entire nation are reckoning with. Why are we lagging so far behind Pasadena Police? Pasadena Police have a reputation for killing black folk and for targeting people of color. This needs to end. Stand up. Be bold. The moment is, the moment is now. Meet the moment and act accordingly and fire the officer who murdered Anthony McLean and shot him in the back. Thank you.
Thank you. That completes public comment on matters not on the agenda. Mayor, we have two public comment speakers for matters on the closed session agenda. We can get to, do you want to take them now?
Uh, before we get there, Mayor, I have a quick question. Thank you, Mayor. Um, to the City Manager, I remember when I was Deputy Chief of Police in Richmond, we had a random drug policy, not only for like, let me repeat that, random drug policy testing program for employees, all employees, and also a more rigorous one for public safety personnel. Uh, is there something similar taking place in the city of Pasadena?
Uncle Member Kennedy, I I can only speak from history. I will have to check what the rules are today. In the past, it, we didn't have a random testing policy, but we had a policy that any employee that we're we're concerned might have any substance or any type uh, abuse on especially those of it well, being on work, uh, did have to take. But uh, as to just having random tests on an ongoing basis, also would allow, I would be glad to check.
It's unfair, it's unfair for any of staff to have to talk and no one can hear them, and that's been going on from the beginning of the meeting. There are times in which a staff is talking and you cannot hear them. And that is, it was more prevalent in that moment when City Manager Cynthia Kurtz was speaking. So I suppose I and other members of the council, who are remote, did not hear her last part of her comments.
I am, I'm need to to learn to be more apt with this mic, and I do apologize, Councilmember Kennedy. I think I wasn't leaning in far enough.
Okay, okay.
So, um, I I do not know of the current policy. In the past, we did not have a random testing policy, although employees that were suspected of having any substance use on the job were required to submit to a test. Let me check on the current policy today and return to the full council with a more complete answer.
Thank you very much.
And we can do that in the form of a memorandum. Uh, Mr. Hampton?
I was gonna ask a similar question to Councilmember Kennedy's, um, as it relates to um, substance uh, use of substances and do we have a, uh, not a random. I I think that everybody should be test tested uh, quarterly. I mean, we we are testing our employees for COVID regularly. We should be testing them to see if there are any employee, not just police department, but any employee um, that is um, working for the city, uh, should have uh, testing. Because I I think that as part of the requirement, at least last time I looked at employment, you have to have um, a test going in um, to 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 get your job, so that that should stay uh, relatively the same, as long as it's um, you know, substance abuse, you know, steroids, uh, methamphetamines, et cetera. And so I think that uh, we should really look at the policy as a whole. Uh, and so hopefully, um, um, when City Manager uh, comes back with that report, we look at it for all employees. Um, because that's really important. Trash truck drivers, et cetera, um, should not be under the influence. And then as far as uh, psyche evaluations, which was brought up, and I brought it up in public safety before, are psyche evaluations um, something in public safety um, annual, or is it just you get a psyche evaluation before you get the job, and then after that, it's it's, there's no more? That's a question.
I, again, I will return uh, if I have incorrect information, but I would be very surprised that annual psychological evaluations are required of any employees, including our police officers. But I I will chat and get back.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hampton. Um, I think that completes uh, our public uh, agenda and uh, it's now time to turn to closed session, and we have two public commenters on closed session. Mr. Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. The City Council will convene in a virtual meeting to discuss closed session items A, B, and C on today's agenda. An opportunity is provided at this time for public comment on the closed session items. We have two speakers, uh, Heavenly Hughes and Alan Shay for pu- uh, closed session items. Uh, we will start with uh, Heavenly Hughes, please. And it's for uh, two minutes.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead.
Talking about Agenda C, which is in regards to public employees' performance. Um, first off, I'm glad that this was just brought up recently about um, drug tests and the mental evaluation. I know Attorney Carrie Harper said that when there's an officer-involved shooting, it should automatically be a drug test administered immediately with police officers involved with that shooting. And also a mental evaluation done immediately. To hear um, that there is nothing in place brings us back to why it's so important for us to get this OIS policy on the agenda. As I've heard Mayor Victor Gordo and Tyrone Hampton mention, that it's a be, that it will be in January. Mayor Victor Gordo, just as easy as it was for you to speak earlier to me, it's just that easy to apologize to the community for derating, dismissing, and humiliating the community callers who have consistently called in over a year to fire Officer Edwin Do McGwenden and all officers involved with the cover-up and murder of Anthony McLean. Cynthia Kurtz, I have called in for many, many months demanding the city to say something. We always want the community to say something. We all need you all to say something and do something about police violence in our community. Mayor Victor Gordo targeted and attacked me, a woman, for addressing police accountability. That's part of the performance evaluation that I hope you guys are discussing today. Do not move on when it comes to taking disciplinary action. When it comes to taking disciplinary action in the murder of Anthony McLean. We would also like you, we would also like to know the details of the officer-involved shooting that happened on November twenty-third. Has that been, information been put out? My understanding that a young black man was shot and killed on the east side of Pasadena. We under, we see often that when black, when white men shoot and kill people, mass shootings. I'll finish this one point. It is very important that accountability is on both sides. We see white men who do mass shootings walk away from the scene and appre- apprehend it without being killed. We want to know why the black man was killed on November twenty-third in the officer-involved shooting. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Alan Shay. Star six to unmute. You have two minutes. Go ahead, Alan.
Thank you, uh, Mayor Gordo and City Councilmember. I hope that in your closed session, that based on the authority and the power under California uh, Code five, four, nine, five, seven, that you exercise the discussion to fire all officers involved with Anthony McLean uh, shooting. Because this, this code gives you the authority to review uh, claims of employees. And I hope that this is one of the things you do, especially with our new uh, ti- uh, interim City Manager, uh, Cynthia, and I, I've followed Cynthia for years. I think she's incredible. And I hope that she uh, continues to move forward with that same type of of uh, passion that that uh, we used to see years ago, uh, that we need here in Pasadena now. So I hope to see that uh, in closed session and get some good results uh, for next week's City Council meeting, so that it will take the stress off the community and the community can really start to heal uh, with putting the Anthony McLean chapter behind them. Thank you.
Mayor and Council, that completes public comment on the closed session.